I would ask all of you for a moment of silence devoted to the fallen in Dallas. The services begin tomorrow for the fallen officers. Heavenly Father, I want to keep first things first in our community and in our nation. And tonight, Lord, the nation grieves over the loss of the keepers of the community, our police officers. Though they be Dallas Police Department, Lord, they well could be our city or any other in the nation or the world. And we lament their loss and the sadness that goes with this tragedy. And we agree in one spirit, dear God, that you can change the hearts and minds of those who would prevail such tragedies on our society today. We live in such a time, Lord, when we really need your providential care, love, and help to protect those that protect us. I thank you, Lord, for the community we live in and those that lead it. I'm grateful, Lord, for our administrators, department heads, our mayor and council persons, those that work on standing committees, and those that rise at each shift to put their boots on the ground and keep this city safe and moving forward as a progressive community. For all of them, we're grateful. For those that are here tonight and in each session to share in these meetings and give input, I'm grateful, Lord, for their participation. And I pray tonight that you bless the time that's spent together, the discussions that are held, and any decisions that are made, that they would be pleasing unto you. I'll be faithful to continue to pray for those that are part of the city, family and extended. I pray, Lord, for your continual care, Lord, for Gabriel Polston, Ms. Bush Jost, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Chyland, Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, and any and all others that I may not have named individually. I pray your blessings on them. Continue, Lord, to let us be light and hope in this world and bless this community that we can be visionary and an example to others that would be pleasing. We pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. At the beginning of every council meeting, we've set aside a time for citizens to share any concerns they may have with the council, particularly those that are not on the agenda already. We just asked that you limit your comments to five minutes, and of which the clerk will keep track. And also give us your name and your address, please. So at this time, is anyone here who'd like to share with the council? If you'd please come forward at this time. Don't see anybody coming up. We'll move on to unfinished business then. Update on the airport runway project. You want to take us from that, Mr.?
Kyle Brimmer normally would be doing this. I think Wayne Shyland, Councilman Shyland, probably knows just about as much about it as I do, as I was on vacation last week. But a couple of weeks ago, they did get the center section of the runway paved from one end to the other with a little gap in the middle to allow for the taxiway for the airport to remain open. They did have plans to do the next two pores.
They got one of those done, though.
They got one done? And they planned on finishing up a week ago, actually, a week ago tomorrow. But based on, because of the rain and the weather, they have not completed that. So they are set back a little bit. But the work that they've done has been very good. I'm pretty confident they'll be done within the contract timeframe.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Johnson on that subject? Okay. Very good. I was out there Monday, and yeah, they're making good progress on it. Update on the Green Building.
Last Wednesday was the deadline for accepting bids. However, we only received one bid, so we weren't able to open the bids. The mayor and I talked about it a little bit last week. We came up with a few options. One option would be to pay for the materials ourselves and do the labor ourselves. Engineering came up with a cost estimate for the materials, which will be about eleven to twelve thousand dollars. The other option would be to continue to use Whiskey Wild until we can get the community center built, which we estimate will probably be between one and three years. Les Hudson looked at the Whiskey Wild building last week. Kyle Brimmer's looked at it in the past. Both of them have determined that the building is safe to use. They didn't see any problem with using it for the programs that we're talking about. So there's a couple of options there. We didn't think that putting it back out for bid would really do anything. So those are the options that we discussed.
How about the, would it be more cost effective to stay like we are now and go ahead and try to renovate the Green Building?
Well, I mean, we're not going to put any money into the Whiskey Wild building, obviously. The cost you have there is utilities, which are about four thousand a year. You're still going to have some utility costs if you move to the Green Building. I'm not sure what that would be. Probably the cheapest thing is to stay in.
I mean, if you're anticipating later on to move into the project that we've been talking about out in the city.
Yes.
Versus the cost of money spent on renovating the Green Building, what would be more cost effective?
I think just to hold off and.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. And continue to use the building.
I think the only additional thing that you may want to do that really started this conversation in the get-go was maybe throw a little paint on it. I think you need to limit the amount of money that you put on there.
Well, if we're going to be using, if we stay in Whiskey Wild, what do we have to do then?
I mean, the roof leaks. I'm not asking you to fix that. I mean, that's just something that we'll have to get along with, because that would be a costly expense. And I don't know if it's worth it to put that kind of money into that building. That's just something we battle with. I think you're probably looking at maybe four to six hundred dollars in paint, if that, and maybe some plywood to patch up a few areas.
So is it cost effective to keep pouring into Whiskey Wild? Wouldn't it be better to place that money? If you keep putting on restoration of the Green Building, your price tag is going to keep going up every year. So wouldn't it be better that some way in our budget, we can come up with this price that you need for the Green Building?
Well, the Green Building would be better because it doesn't leak. I mean, that would be great. But it's really just a temporary fix, because, you know, hopefully we'll move all our programs into a community center somewhere down the road. You know, and I would guess that once we move into the community center, we wouldn't use the Green Building at all. So I don't know. It's hard to say. I just don't think putting a lot of money into the renovation is a good idea. I think we could probably get along with the Whiskey Wild building until then. And I'm not saying put a lot of money into that either. That's, I'm talking about a few cheap things, like a coat of paint and.
But you mentioned at one of your presentations about bricks actually falling off of the building.
I didn't mention that.
Someone.
Someone did mention that. But we've been up on the roof. We looked at it. There's a few loose bricks towards the back of it in the alley. We've taken those down. Other than that, we've never had, to be honest with you, we've never had an issue of bricks falling down. There were some bricks that fell inward when we had the hailstorm. But we've never had any issues with them falling into the alley or onto vehicles or people.
Clay, my concern is safety.
Yes. I was going to say the children's safety.
Now, can you put twelve thousand dollars, safety, I mean, if we're talking twelve, fourteen thousand to renovate the Green Building? I know we can't guarantee safety. Of course not. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. But that's my biggest concern, is the safety of the kids in and out of that building and the seasons and the weather and the years and the, that's my concern.
And it's mine, too. I mean, over the past five or six years, I've had my own kids in there. And I wouldn't put them in there if I didn't feel like it was safe enough. You know, I'm not an expert on the stability of the building. But, you know, I wouldn't put my kids in there. I wouldn't put other kids in there if I didn't think it was safe. That doesn't mean something couldn't happen tomorrow.
Well, and as time goes by, that building's going to deteriorate that much more. So are you feeding a dead horse by patching up and staying with it?
I feel like I'm just buying time, buying a little bit of time till we can get into something else.
Yeah. If we just kind of think a little bit and revisit where we were when we first got the report, remember that was pre-parcing wreck tax and stormwater tax. So at that time, you know, the thought was, okay, yes, safety was paramount. And again, that's where the tender of that report was from, is what's going to make this safe for the future. And we also wanted to kind of improve the appearance, as I recall. But of course, since then, we know that there's a possibility of having a new facility that will meet our needs within the next two to three years. And I think what Clay and I were talking about was, yeah, if the utilities are, if that's all you have on the Whiskey Wild building and you do minimal and continue to take the crews in and so forth and clean up after each rain, you know, we could get by for a couple of years. So I guess where we are right now is trying to limit the amount of money that we're putting into any facility in transition. And the, of course, with the Green Building, there is also some real concern about making that exclusively for the wrestling club, for the future. So that also kind of plays into this situation, too.
I didn't think it was going to be exclusive. I thought he did cheerleading in this Whiskey Wild area.
We would do probably three to four programs. The primary use would be for the wrestling.
Yeah.
But if the city actually owns that building.
Correct.
Could we not lease it out or rent it out for family reunions or something and make a little income back off of it? Would insurance allow us to do something?
Well, again, it takes some, sure, we can. It just takes investment in what we want to do with it. And, yeah, that's definitely a possibility.
And what we're proposing is kind of a bare bones renovation, you know, plywood walls, you know.
Now, you're talking about the Green Building.
Yes, yeah. And putting a restroom in, throwing some paint on it, putting some lights and things like that in there. It probably would not be nice enough to host a family reunion or a wedding reception or anything like that. I can't see a lot of people wanting to run it out unless we put a lot of money into it to make it somewhat fancy.
So what did you say the dollar amount was right now to refurbish the Green Building to suit your needs?
I think materials only would be about twelve thousand. So, and that's with us doing all the labor.
Right. Well, you have a lot of good-hearted people in this community. You could probably get that material-wise lowered a little bit. And you have a lot of, a lot of good people that'll go in there and paint for you, if that's what you need. You've got a lot of good carpenters that would go in there and help do some of that if that'll take down on the price.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any labor price, I mean, but we definitely wouldn't turn away any volunteer help if we had some of that. But like I said, I think the biggest cost would be just the materials.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could we get an estimate of what it would cost to fix the roof and fix, you know, stabilize the Whiskey Wild building? Whether we need to do a roof or not, but, you know, maybe there's a couple roofing companies in Columbia and Jefferson City that do bigger buildings like that.
Jeremy did that.
We got that.
And we already got that.
We had that. I don't remember how much it was. It was forty thousand.
About forty.
I remember, yeah. It was in the forty area.
I mean, we're trying to do a stopgap here.
Right.
So do we need to stabilize the bricks? You say we remove the bricks and less, and Kyle has both said the building is safe to be in and be around.
Yeah, I won't speak for Les, but I think that was our discussion.
Yeah. Why don't we let Les give his impression of words?
Because that was the reason we were wanting to event it. It was because we were concerned about the safety.
Right.
Well, the mayor and myself, Kyle Brimmer, we've all looked at the building. I can't stand here and tell you people it's going to stand for another ten years. It may fall down tomorrow. From appearance and what we look at, it looks very safe. One of the major problems is it's got a few leaks in the roof. That could be repaired, but it sounds like that'd be very expensive. I don't know what the cost would be. But I think you're going to be okay for a couple of years, five years, probably not. But I think you can get a couple more years out of the building without spending much money at all, if any.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, if we tear down Whiskey Wild, what are we going to do with the land? What are we going to do when that's, if we tear that, if we tear that building down, what are we going to do with that piece of land?
Well, I think we're just, like any surplus property, we'll take bids.
All right, make some money or something. Yeah. I just was wondering what direction that would go.
Push it down and make rental spaces out there for your vehicles.
You also have to think of the cost of tearing down the Whiskey Wild building, too.
Right.
Exactly right.
It's not just the cost of tearing down the Whiskey Wild building. It costs half as much more as the materials for the Green Building.
Yeah, that's correct. Do we already own the Green Building?
Yes.
Okay. And is it giving us any income at all right now?
No, it's, right now it's just being used for storage.
For the city?
Yes.
That's the city's. Okay.
How much space do you need?
I'd say if we had something that's comparable to sixty by sixty, somewhere in there.
What just came to my mind is the downstairs of what's now the police department used to be used when it was calorie electric. Could that be used?
Well, and Mayor and I talked about it. We've talked about several places. The big issue is finding a place to leave the mats down. If you don't, if you don't have a place where you can leave the mats down, you have to ask volunteers to come in about a half hour, forty-five minutes earlier to roll out the mats. Then they usually stay about a half hour later to roll them back up. Then you still have the rolls in the way if you have an event going on down there. So that's, that's the only thing. And the wrestling season takes up about, probably about five months.
Right.
And then cheerleading takes up on and off about six weeks. It's a couple times a week for six weeks. And we've had some karate classes, some self-defense classes in there, some tumbling classes. So you would have to constantly put the mats up.
Yeah.
Up and down.
So you leave the mats up over here at Whiskey Wild and then use other areas for the other events?
All those activities use the mats.
Okay.
They're on the mats. Yeah, like the cheerleading, they can roll around on the mats and lift each other up, and it's kind of a safer environment.
All right.
It sounds like the old Green Building may be your best bet, no matter what.
It's, like I said, it's better, but it's more expensive. And the challenge we have with it is if we do it, if we use our own labor, if we use some of the prisoner labor, it's going to take a little longer. It's going to be a little slower process.
Are you taking consideration the cost of tearing Whiskey Wild down, and that's probably going to be, like Rick said, half of what it would cost to renovate it? So you're talking twenty thousand dollars to.
We're going to have that cost no matter what we do.
Yeah. And so, I mean.
I don't know why we couldn't put it off for at least another year.
Yeah.
And just sit back and see what's happening with this Whiskey Wild building. Maybe we can put it out for bid, the Green Building, again in a year and see if we get more bids on it. Maybe we can wait till this fall when there's fewer jobs for people to do so that we can get more bids on it. I don't know. I don't see any reason why we can't just use the Whiskey Wild building at least for another year.
Well, it's not a push for us to get this done, so.
No.
No. And I think what brought us to the point is when we started talking about tearing the building down.
Yeah.
We needed to find another alternative. And I think Rick's right. I think if we get into the fall and winter and we put it back out for bid, we'll probably get a lot more bids. I think right now, it's just that time of year where all the contractors are.
Everybody's busy.
Busy. We advertised for it and we direct mailed the information probably to forty to forty-five contractors.
Wow.
And we had two people come look at it. We had one person submit a bid.
What was his bid?
We couldn't open it.
Couldn't open it? That's right. You said that.
That could be.
I think your best bet is to do this as temporary and get busy on your community building, then it'll solve all the problems.
And I think six months to a year from now, we'll probably have a better plan for what the future holds.
Right.
Just put it on hold?
Maybe we can find some of those volunteers to throw a coat of paint on the front of it so that it looks better.
We could probably do that.
We'll take a look at that. Very good. Do we need, I don't think we need to bring that to the vote. They're all pretty much in agreement to go ahead, continue to evaluate it for next year. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Clay. You have some direction. Okay. We'll now move on to new business. Superintendent Jack Coward is with us this evening, and we have a little project we'd like to do jointly with the school. Jack's here to kind of give us a little update. Thank you for being here, sir.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Definitely appreciate your attendance at the burning.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I thought I'd make a comment about the burning, that it's not directly related to the burning, but just with the defeasement of all the, a couple tiffs that you've paid off, it's caused a little stress over in the central office. We've had to revamp our financial planning, which is a good thing, because we've, the board's been able to pre-plan to pay off three hundred thousand dollars next March, some outstanding bonds, which will save us fifteen thousand dollars, not just us, but the community in interest. And we're restructuring how we approach future bond payments right now, after we see what the assessed valuation will be as moving forward. And that's, that's a good thing. We have some bonds sitting out there that, when you just look initially at five percent, but it's through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, it's really at zero percent, at about three million dollars, they will never get paid off until they come due in 2025, because there are no interest costs on those. But it's a, it's a good, it's a good problem to have. Initially, when Mayor Benton was over, I was thinking, oh, how do we handle this? And after I got to bring the numbers, I was like, man, this is a great problem to have when you have that, that kind of a challenge. And kind of worked through it, and we very much appreciate that.
Well, Jack, you know, you weren't superintendent when all this happened out there and you had tiffs and what have you. But if they hadn't been from the school kicking in, giving us permission to do it, we'd have never done it.
Yeah, I understand that, too.
So I mean.
We all have to work together.
Yes.
You know, it's a good thing, you know, kind of working through that. When I was thinking about this, the whole parking lot deal, I had to, I backed up a year to step number one, and I thought I'd just take a minute to bring you forward and think about how we got to where we're at today. And the first thing I think about is our enrollment. This past year, we have, we finished the past year with two thousand two hundred and six kids. Fifty-five percent of those kids are a thousand two hundred and thirteen kids, on average, ride a bus every day. That's a lot of kids. That's twenty-five buses full of kids. Twenty-five buses hit every building in this district twice a day. There's more buses go to buildings throughout the day, but just AM and PM. Well, you think about that, and then you think, okay. And I don't know exactly how many walkers we have, but building principals have told me that number is not more than ten percent. So when you think about a school like McIntyre with about four hundred kids, that means probably about a hundred and forty kids are car riders. So in the morning and in the afternoon, down Hickman Avenue, we've got twenty-five buses and a hundred and forty cars. Because very seldom do more than one, does a car pick up two kids. Usually it's one kid. And I think Chief Myers can probably tell you that. You know, and at McIntyre, anyway, Chief, I don't know, you might correct me on this, but I think they have them lined up in three rows, two rows of cars and a row of buses, and then they're shuffling them in and out. So you think about that number of cars, and I probably wasn't real nice, well, I hope I was nice, but I know our faculty wasn't real nice when the chief and the emergency management people, the fire chief at the time, said, we can't have parking on this street. And the issue was the traffic, but the issue was getting fire trucks and ambulances down the street. And after the chief took me over there and said, yeah, look at this. Yeah, I got it. Yeah, you know, that made a lot of sense. And that's what kind of got all this rolling. So then you think about McIntyre. Every day between seven-ish and four, there's fifty-five people that are supposed to be in that building between those hours. And those are the people we're paying. Then there's probably another twenty-five that are volunteers or parents, and that, and twenty of those twenty-five are students coming in from other colleges around town. And so, so you got fifty-five, twenty-five, you're starting to push seventy-five, eighty, and you have sixty-six parking spots off the street. And so hence the problem. By putting on this additional fourteen spots, it ups those parking spaces about twenty percent. And the reality of life, when I've been over for probably ten weeks, I was over there three times a week counting spaces. There were generally spaces available. And that was using that park in the back and some extra spaces we put in. So were we hurting? Yes. On grandparents' day, were we hurting? Every school in Missouri will be hurting on grandparents' day. On special days, there will be a parking problem. There's no way we're going to build enough parking in this community and probably every other community to solve that problem. But the fourteen spaces will be very valuable as we put them through there. From a district perspective, we came up with a plan a couple of years ago to secure the buildings with electronic access, and I controlled access, I, the district, the board, controlled access to the buildings, to specific doors. We solved some of our problem by expanding that access at McIntyre so teachers could get in at various access points and expanded their ability to park around the building. That's been done. So if we can expand that parking, it's going to help us a lot. And by the design of the parking lot, I assume they've seen that plan?
Um, maybe not.
Well, I didn't send it back to, Bill has a plan. Bill and the mayor have a plan for the north end of the lot, to put in fourteen spaces that run north and south out of there. And it still allows us a twenty-five foot, I believe it's a twenty-five foot space to run a special needs bus down and turn around and pick up kids where they can get in, so work through that. And the agreement, as you saw in the letter, the city's providing engineer, engineering work, a lot of labor. We're paying for supplies, and then we will piggyback off of an asphalt bid to get that work done. Obviously, we would have liked it done yesterday, but that's not going to happen. And we're very pleased to get it done whenever, whenever that can get done, and we'll make accommodations with our schedule of whenever that can happen. Be glad to answer any questions, but that's, but I, when I went back through the statistics and got to thinking about walkers, riders, and all that, it's kind of amazing. I guess the bottom line is, unless I need to be at a building during school start time or school release time, I stay away from those places because traffic is a mess.
Jack, does the college present a problem with that street?
You know, not, yes, but they've got a lot of parking there, and they, it, those kids kind of stay out of that way at that time. They kind of know to stay out of that way.
They're smart, they will.
And Chief Myers' group does a good job at all these buildings to kind of monitor people, especially early in the year, and kind of get those, get those traffic flow patterns established. And after about the first couple of weeks of school, and then early in January, when everybody comes back to school and they're monitoring, get that flow established, we don't have a lot of problems.
I just know picking up four grandchildren there over time. There are times you can't even get one car through with them parked on both sides.
Well, that's, that's why the, no parking was established, and, you know, that was a good thing.
What you're talking about, these fourteen extra spaces that will be over where the mobile home classrooms used to be?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think, I think it's already been flagged. I don't know. Les, do you know? I don't know, Wes, do you know?
I think it's already been flagged off down there. I saw some flags down there this morning, today, so I don't know.
They probably have. I do ask no without checking.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I didn't notice it a week ago, so I don't know.
Okay, any questions? Any other questions?
Thank you.
I guess I have one, Mr. Mayor. Why would the city do this and not a private contractor? Why, I'm just concerned we're setting a precedent. I understand the need, but, and we got rid of, we helped get, create the need by getting rid of the parking spaces on the street. To see God to me.
Where I'm coming from is we build a parking lot for a new industry coming to town. I can't see why we can't help another taxpayer entity and get a project done that, that's something that we have, have a capability of doing. That's, that's, that was my thought.
It's my understanding, part of that parking lot over there was built by the city several years ago.
It's part of the walking trail.
The walking trail.
Oh, gotcha.
My opinion is that we're all one community. This is our school system. This includes us. I mean, we're part of the school, this is our citizens. I mean, to me, they help each other, definitely.
I'm, I just want to bring that out there, you know.
Thank you. That, that's all I can say.
Me, too. Yeah, me, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Okay, very good. That will be considered later in the meeting. Also on the new business, Ms. Trowbridge is with us from Fulton State, Fulton High School Student Council. Looks like we're going to have a homecoming parade. Would you like to come up and tell us what's going on?
Thank you. Our homecoming is early this year. It's going to be September 9th, and so I'm just requesting our parade route, no changes from the past. They would line up on Nickel Street, turn down 10th Street, and then come down Court. And that would be at 3 o'clock on that Friday, September 9th.
Any questions from Ms. Trowbridge? Move for approval.
Second.
Very good. I think I have a motion second to approve the homecoming parade for September the 9th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favorably signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
I think we'll, we'll get that to you then.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item is a discussion of delivery of city council packets by the police. Chief, do you have something you'd like to contribute here?
Yeah, we've had this discussion numerous times over the past 10 years, and I've been for it every time, so I think it's a good idea. I, I do see some of the council persons' points, certainly, that they get to meet some officers and maybe visit with them a little bit, but I would encourage all of you to come up to the department anytime around 4:45, 5 o'clock, and you'll see, and get to meet a lot of our officers. And some, some of the council does right as well.
My concern, Chief, is now with a uniform being a target, somebody's delivering my council papers.
Not going to make us any more of a target, no.
Oh, I, and I know that.
Those guys are out there every day.
Ms. Courtney here, she called around, and she said, other cities are doing this, we've done it for years. But I would like for Fulton to be a leader, not a follower, and it seems like we follow Columbia, Jefferson City. Why can't we be the leader? And I just don't see that a police officer, it's his responsibility to make sure I get these papers.
Sometimes it's pretty tough.
Yeah, I just don't think it's right.
You know, they're going to have to go back five or six times sometimes. It does certainly spend a lot of their time, they could be doing other things. On the other hand, it's up to you.
Well, there's another.
I'll, we'll do with that.
There's another factor that enters into that, and right now, I feel like I'm about halfway handicapped on what I can do. I can't drive. I have to take, I have to call somebody, take some place, right, to call the barber and things. I recall Mike to bring, bring me the council. And I was looking for the packet this week, and I'm going, and I don't have any way to get down there.
Sure, I, I understand your situation.
I got mine Friday afternoon.
I got mine Wednesday.
Sunday.
But you've lived in Fulton long enough, you know somebody that would gladly do that little chore for you.
Yes.
I agree with Ms. Gray. I think at this point, I, and I understand also that we have a problem here. I would be glad to.
And we can make exceptions sometimes, I mean.
And I would have no problem delivering it to anybody.
There's a lot of things we can do.
Yeah.
I don't know we get it in town by 5 o'clock either, so, I mean, that's sometimes an issue, too.
But with, if you pick it up at the police department, they're there 24/7. You can pick it up anytime that's convenient for you.
We have a drive-through.
We do.
Councilman Cattle uses.
Yeah, we just got that window open.
Had a call from Councilman Vaughn when he was letting us know he couldn't be here, he had to be out of town. He suggested that, again, we, we pretty well left it this way through the years, leave it up to each council person. I know some of you pick it up when you need to, and then others of you allow it to be delivered, and, and some of, some of you want it electronically. So, you know, I think we can probably accommodate however, whichever way that individual council persons would like to have it done. And doesn't mean that because you choose one method that you'd have to stick with it all the time.
But just because it's been done this way for years doesn't mean it's the right way to do it.
No, if you let Courtney know, I know she would be able to pass that on to, to my people and do it however we want.
Yeah, she's very reliable.
Well, maybe this would be the perfect opportunity to bring back up that what if we went electronic? What if we went ahead and got the iPads that we had talked about in the past, and it was all delivered electronically, then this wouldn't be an issue for any of us.
Exactly.
We'd have all the history, right?
I believe Mr. Johnson said he was working on that project, didn't he?
Well, we've kind of gone back and forth on it. I think we're doing it right now.
I mean, if you guys, if you guys want them electronic, we can give them electronic. Probably take us months and a half, two months, because I think we have access to some used tough books, where we'd be able to get everybody set up and get them all ready, and we just, those of you that have iPads or computers that you want to use, if you still want the tough book, fine. If not, you could do it on your iPad, or we would supply you with a tough book that you carry back and forth.
I might be wrong, Mr. Johnson, but I think those tough books that you're talking about are the same, similar to what we have in our patrol cars.
That's what we're looking at, a surplus state, I think. Well, we started working on electronic, but, you know, I think it's, should be up to each individual council. The officers are out and about anyway. I have a note on the front of mine, leaving on the front porch. I let Courtney know when I'm going to be out of town so that, you know, don't even give it to the officers to try to deliver. So, you know, and I think everybody should be responsible enough to do that.
Well, mine's delivered to my business, and I kind of like having a police officer there.
That's pretty cool.
And that's where I am, too. I mean, Sunday, I was out cutting grass. I'm going to tell the quick story. I saw the officer come off Cleatwood into my neighborhood, go through the neighborhood, then went over and delivered Councilman Shilin's packet. It was nice to see him going through the, going through the neighborhood.
Oh, I like that.
It is good to see, to have that presence throughout the city.
So what I'm hearing is we want to pursue going electronic, and until that happens, it is councilman's choice, and you will give the city clerk instructions as to whether you want home delivery or you will pick it up at the PD. And I think that's a good, because the PD is open 24 hours. Okay?
Sure.
I'm good with that.
Yep. And like I say, even if we go electronic delivery, and you for some reason decide that, you know, you don't want it that way, just let the clerk know, and she will accommodate you. Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. We got our marching orders, and we'll try and go that way.
Did I have just a couple of minutes?
Sure, bet.
I want to say how proud and honored I am, not only to live in the Fulton, but to work here. Since the ambush of the five police officers in Dallas, my people have been stopped, I can't tell you how many times, by citizens telling them what a great job they do and thank them for their service. We had more food than all of us in this room could eat over the weekend. And I just think the outpouring of our Fulton community was, was outstanding, and I think that you also should certainly know that, but more importantly, I think the citizens should know that. What a, what a fine community we live in, the support they have for their police department. I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
We're, we're really blessed to work here in city government because we get to see that every day, how, how blessed we are being a part of this community. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to council concerns. This is a time set aside for council people to bring forward any concern or matter they like to discuss that's not already on the agenda. So have, let's see, I don't know where I started last time. We just started down there with Shilin.
That side.
No matter.
Cheer up.
I had nothing.
Nothing.
What I wanted, anybody that was not on Fourth Street when we did the lighting ceremony, that was the best thing. All I ever got was positive results from that. And many people said, we need to do this more often, to just block off that block and just have another community event, and it was wonderful. So it was just, it was good, you got there, you seen little bitty kids running, and you felt safe with letting the little ones run, and it was just a very, very nice event. So, and I spoke to Debbie LaRue, and I can't think of the other girl. Anyway, just so they know that it was all a positive event.
Thank you. Yes, and just to kind of dovetail on there, it, it's neat to see the community behind a project like that. And it's really fun to listen to the, everyone talk about the, the first kiss they got in the, in the theater or whatever, so, yeah. It was a good time, so, yeah. Okay, Ms. Reclu?
Yes, I have a couple of things. There's a piece of property where they tore a house down, behind McDonald's, it's on Palmer and Tyler there.
Okay.
What's happening there that's still, they tore it down, and then everything's a mess. There's grass and weeds and what's, does anyone know what's going on in that corner?
The gentleman, the company that has built those new apartments right across from that, that's his game plan. He's going to build some more of those buildings along there.
Okay, I just wanted to.
And I don't know if he hasn't gotten financial backing yet or what, but that's the game plan.
Do we need to get on a little bit to finish cleaning it up?
Okay, okay. Thank you. And the other one is on the corner of, next to Midwest Petroleum there, right on Business Loop there with Chestnut, West Chestnut. There's a lot there on the corner, too. There's a backhoe sitting there at one time, it's, you know, the petroleum.
Where they took the house down?
Yeah, took the house down there. Now, what's going on? Is that private property? Is that someone else's?
I think they're going to rebuild there.
Okay, all right. I just want, it's the same thing. It's kind of a mess, it's kind of grown up, and I just wonder what we're doing with it or if something, we're aware of. Okay. Okay, Wes, thank you.
We'll check it out.
Thank you.
Mr. West?
That's all.
I have nothing tonight.
I'm good.
Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 3256 is a resolution, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter in, on our behalf, on the city's behalf, to enter into seal coat services. Who did we give that to?
Councilwoman Gray.
Okay. Councilwoman Reclu, would you please present 3256?
Councilwoman Gray. I'm sorry.
Gray, okay. Councilwoman Gray, okay.
It's okay.
Sorry about that.
Resolution number 3256, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to execute a contract with Missouri Petroleum Products Company, LLC of St. Louis, and to sign all necessary documentation in relations to said contract for the purpose of providing aggregate seal coat services and establish an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3256 at this meeting.
Second. Very good. I have a motion in the second to adopt 3256. If any discussion, Kyle's not here. Bill, you want to tell a little bit about this as well?
We're going to do some of the streets this summer in a chip seal.
This is chip seal, Wayne's turn?
Chip seal.
Okay.
The, we're, we're pretty much have to, we've been in the business for many years, but we haven't done it for the past couple hours. The main reason is our tank that we have the oil put in, it's, they've gone to a water emulsified oil, so when the product sits in the tank for an extended period, it, it separates. Well, our tank does not have a stirring mechanism. So to get in, to get a new tank was like $35,000 or $40,000 for just a few blocks of street a year. Kyle and I and some others talked about it a little bit, and we said, let's just bid it out. And we got this price, and it's, Kyle actually thought it was a price very competitive with what we would cost us to do it ourselves. So we're going to try it that, this year and see how it goes. The bid, we're, we're tagging on a, a bid that Boone County and Columbia did, and the contractor's good with honoring the price.
So this is 19775?
Yes.
So if there's not any further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 3256, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. It looks like we'll be entering into that contract. We now have another resolution which authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with InstaForm Technologies of Chesterfield, Missouri. Councilman Shilin, would you please present this one for consideration, please?
Are you talking about 1457?
No, 1357. 3257, the resolution.
Right there. Give you W. D.
Got it. Yeah.
The resolution, Resolution 3257, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to execute a contract with InstaForm Technologies, USA, LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri, for the purpose of providing sewer collection, line rehabilitation services, to sign all necessary documents in relation to said contract and establish them a effective date. Move the Resolution 3256 may move to the second reading.
Thank you.
Oh, be passing that.
Second.
Yeah, okay. You're good.
Very good.
3257.
3257.
3257.
Mr. Donlaw, would you come up and tell us a little bit about this, what we're doing here? I know we got a map in here.
Yeah.
That's an area inherent in Sud Division that we've had backup problems before, and we went ahead and camered the section that you're looking at in that map, and all but one spot was structurally sound. What we got is a lot of roots right at the joints. So we got one point repaired to make that's about six foot deep. And then this firm will come in, camera it, do light cleaning, line it, hammered again, and cut the surfaces in. They've, they've done work here before.
Right, they just put the line.
Right.
How does it solve the problem?
It keeps the roots, it gives it a new inner surface. As long as the pipe is structurally sound, this adds a new line inside, so it, the roots can't get back in and be one complete sock, except for where they cut at the surfaces.
The roots can't?
They can't, there's no crack.
They can't infiltrate that?
No, they haven't, no.
And that's been the problem that's causing the backup is the roots, and they're not clapping or anything else.
We've got one spot, we've got to fix one small, short section.
Okay.
We'll fix that in-house.
So most of the five cents, we could shave. Little run. Okay.
And the 96, 900 we're talking about, where's that money coming from?
That's in this year's budget for the INI.
Okay.
It's, it's well budgeted.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Very good. I have a motion in the second to adopt Resolution 3257. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the most in place signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good, thank you. We'll now go on to ordinances, and we'll consider first reading ordinances. Bill number 1454 is a bill that places an addendum to our mutual aid agreement with Central Fire District. Councilman Shilin, would you please present Bill number 1454, first reading, title only?
First reading. Bill number 1454, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to all the addendum to the effective... To the Callaway County Fire Chief and mutual aid agreement and establish an effective date. Bill number 1457 may move to second reading for the next scheduled meeting.
Second, 1454.
What does it say?
Seven. Thank you. I have a motion, and a second, to advance Bill 1454. Is any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you. We'll now consider Bill number 1455, first reading, and it has to do with creating the fourteen... The small parking lot at McIntyre's School. Councilman Chividecker, would you please present this for first reading, title only?
Yes. Bill number 1455, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with the Fulton Public School District for a creation of a fourteen-space parking lot at the north end of the McIntyre Elementary School property and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that Bill number 1455 be advanced for second reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Second. Very good, thank you. We heard discussion on this earlier. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to go ahead and call for a question. All those in favor of advancing 1455 second reading at the next regular scheduled meeting, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay, very good, thank you.
Can I ask a question about...
Sure.
Sorry, I should have asked in the discussion. How long after we... I guess if we do two readings next meeting, how long will it take? Because that'll be after school's... No, it won't be after school starts. How long will it take us to get this built?
The engineering department estimated about three days, but the asphalt won't get laid until after school starts.
Really? So we do prep work?
We'll be... We'll dig it out and lay down the rock and get it compacted, but the asphalt will get laid when the asphalt company shows up.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. So they'll be able to use it with the rock on it, but it won't be perfect or in good shape until we get it back off. Okay. Very good. I do not have any appointments this evening. Under announcements, I think you can see, reminder, the MML conference is going to take place September 11 through the 14th of September. And, again, I believe the majority of you have already answered the clerk, so it's in good shape there. Couple of the reminder... Or another item that I have, which I'd like for you to give me feedback on, is I'd like to have a council budget retreat this year, and I was thinking tentative dates would be Tuesday, September 20th, or October 4th. Both of those are Tuesdays, so if you would check your schedules and let me know how that fits in, or if you... If there's an alternative day that's better for you, please advise on that one. Okay? Tuesdays don't work, but...
Oh, that's right, Mike.
Also, as a reminder that's coming up, the August 2nd election, the city is requesting the citizens to give us a decision on a vehicle sales use tax, so we can continue to collect those in the future, and we'll definitely be putting out more information on that in the next coming couple of weeks between now and August 2nd. Anyway, that is going to be on the ballot, and if you'd like to have further information on that, or if you have an organization that needs a speaker, we'll be happy to get somebody there for that. The last item that I had here, why we're under announcement, is I just wanted to remind everyone that this is the debt-free week, we're calling it, or Parks and Rec's calling it, and tomorrow at... From 11 to 3, there's free hamburgers for all citizens, hot dogs are brought, and chips out at Tanglewood at the clubhouse. Thursday...
Clay going to be cooking?
I'm sorry?
Clay going to be cooking?
I think Clay's cooking, yeah.[1695.02]